Without any further ado, we'll call this meeting to order. And we'll ask Commissioner Walsh to lead us in the pledge.
Please join in the pledge to our flag. I pledge allegiance
to the flag of the United States
and to the Republic
for which it stands.
stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Amen.
Chairman Pencil, sir, you are muted.
I get muted? How did I get muted? Public comment cards and comments left on the county's website prior to the board meeting have been compiled and made a part of the supporting materials that have been provided to the county commissioners and public for review. Only two periods of public comment will be taken during this meeting. Once at the beginning of the board meeting and again at the end of the meeting. Public comment will not be taken on each agenda item. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person who has left a voice message on the Douglas County Public Comment phone line, 775-783-6007. Once a public comment period has been opened, once public comment closes, the voice messages will be played to the public and county commissioners in the order they are recorded. No more than one voice message, public comment per person, will be played during each public comment period. Douglas County's public comment phone line became available to take public comment at 1:00 PM. Public comment will remain open for at least five minutes to allow members of the public to call or until the last caller has finished leaving a voice message on the county's public comment line. Board wants to encourage a respectful consideration of all views by members of the public. If the content, I'm not going to read that because we never enforce that. So we're just looking for respectful consideration. This time, public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and control of the Board of County Commissioners. Ms. Poole, do we have any public comment?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have one at this time.
All right, if you would play it.
Um, I believe it was a mistake call. Let me try playing it again. There's no content in the voicemail, sir.
So we'll keep it open until 1:05.
Mr. Chairman, Amy Poole, for the record, I have one more.
Okay, if you play it. Did you play it?
I did. It sounds like he's talking to someone in the background about when the voicemail is going to be open. So hopefully he will call back and leave a message.
Well, it's 1:05. We'll wait for 1:06 and that's, that'll be the end of it if we don't have a public comment. Where it was an opportunity to call back.
Mr. Chairman, sir, I have another voicemail. I will play it.
Okay, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Pencil, Commissioner. My name is Jordan Premedick and I read the DITP sometimes in a farmland of general. You know, I was studying the video, the Latin, it seems to me, the following truth. With respect to the RDA, Chairman Pencil presents as, to paraphrase the saying, we have down in the river Texas, there's a big cattle with no head. Certainly because of the microeconomic view, particularly in the RDA two, which is to this franchise, the works make a point of consistent with the gathering of Christian more angles, the closing in that regard, and so one of them in the hospital. So I like full on record as for a commissioner able to check, he can symbol of freedom, the rock scene, the right of freedom of speech, without fear being gathered with what Christian ones use. I've got speed and good luck with your mission responding civil liberties, spreading out corruption, and bringing it over standing forward. I'm now consistent with the rule of history. Thank you.
I received multiple more. I'll just play them as they're received.
Okay.
Listen, M U C C Y. It was like a Twilight Zone episode, listening to Commissioner Stendel and Walsh at the June 18th VOC meeting complain about mainstream comments that they never see from RDA two petitioners who saw an appointment to write the fall RDA two valid argument. Chairman Pencil was over, he recuses himself from the selection process. Two of those RDA petitioners were generous contributors who worked to get open to elected to the commission as did I. Commissioner Walsh, you promise to preserve the rural nature of Dead West County, but once elected, you voted for just about every project that came before you. Commissioner Pencil, one of your plans was to improve the county's financial controls. I just had square with voting to admit 34.25 million tax dollars for RDA two, a project the voters may kill, while the county was still in the throes of the COVID pandemic with unknown costs and sharp reductions in tax revenue. Knowing that this was a very controversial matter, you flatly refused not so long ago to put RDA two to a vote with the people. When concerns citizens did it inside of you by a petition, you rushed to deny voters a say on something. You have both abandoned your campaign platforms with arrogant silence and a stubborn refusal to listen to your constituents' concerns. The voters took notice. Commissioner Walsh, one of RDA two's most prominent proponents, lost his seat in a landslide. Commissioner Pencil's handpicked replacement until the day the family defeated. What did you expect? So pardon me for rolling my eyes when you complained that your feelings were hurt. I sincerely hope you will use the rest of this term to serve the people of Dead West County.
Virginia Starr, V I R G I N I A S T A R R E T T. I am commenting on two items that are not on the agenda. The first has to do with the ridiculous idea that the county should be in the business of regulating what apparel an elected commissioner should be wearing at a commissioner's meeting. Commissioners are, I want to highlight this, elected. I have heard of silly questions being made over a particular tie clip or a pearson being worn by a commissioner. Now we have people being encouraged to get wild up over commissioners wearing hats. I hope no one has fallen for this. Over time, many commissioners have worn hats, including Nancy McDermott and Dave Nelson. To say a woman can wear a hat, but a man can't would be sexist, right? No time should be wasted in steps, this could be so lame. After the commissioner showing up in his birthday suit, I would recommend that focus on the policies put in place by a commissioner and have those measure up as benefiting our county. That is clearly fair game. My second comment concerns last Thursday's VOC meeting and the melodramatic dialogue of Commissioner Burrows and Chair Larry Pindell, which I believe was meant to publicly embarrass and chastise these and those RDA performance Dave Maxwell and Jeanne Hugle. I find it hard to understand how these two grown men were suited to such childish revenge against those who politically oppose them. Politics is a harsh world. We don't think you have done a good job. Get over it. I and Dave and Jeanne were mandated by the county to be present at that meeting. You were given no opportunity to speak at all, nor were we given any opportunity to respond to the info thrown at us. So we were in heaven, sitting ducks. I hope the two got some satisfaction out of what a deep circumstance can be viewed as nothing more than bullying. Thank you.
Ellie Waller, W A L L E R, item four, BHR revenue update. Are there any issues with the TBT funding stream reduction? Two sources using this as a funding source now propose in the future with the uncertainty of how long public restrictions will be in place. If so, what has been affected and is there a remedy to supplement the budgets that have been reviewed since projects have relied on these funds? I am requesting a monthly update to the VOC for public discussion and awareness. Item five, County Manager Patrick Kates Care Act Fund from the Board Packet. What records must be kept by government receiving payments? A government should keep records sufficient to demonstrate that the amount of funds payments to the government has been used in accordance with section 601D of the Social Security Act. I am requesting accountability statement and discussion monthly on the care funding expenditures be presented to the VOC so the board and public are aware of what can be legally recharged. Recently posted, the State Line Event Center at Longloo will break around July 9th with NBC televised news. Utilities will be put underground this year and water lines rerouted. It will not go vertical the building season as originally planned. Just then, the event center free construction components underground will be believed this year is very premature and should be halted until after the November ballot is challenged to determine if the RDA two 34.25 million stream will continue. If the citizens of Douglas County vote in favor of ending RDA two, is there a remedy to supplement the budget expected from that funding source? I am requesting that Abu Douglas Citizens Authority provide an update to the VOC on current and future expected funding sources. No disrespect to the commenter that has been recently objecting to Commissioner, he will pass. I see no value in requesting he remove it. I would ask often empty public meetings. Why should it be any different for the commissioner? I quoted, the quoted rule is denied. I moved to Lake Tahoe last year for several reasons, with being fire and inability to secure their fire insurance. Douglas County needs to take a serious look at the wild land upland interface, wooly fire coast and readily adopt that for the Carson Valley is evidenced by recent lightning strikes fire in the pine nuts. The building codes at the lake are much stricter than here in Carson Valley. Valley, the developer tends to talk this, but Washoe and Carson both have wooly building codes. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Amy Poole, for the record, that's the last voicemail I received.
Amy, did you say that was the last?
Yes, sir. I don't have any more.
All right, well. Now that I feel all just giddy about all this, so nice to have such good friends. Let's move on. We'll look for approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Walsh, a second by Commissioner Rice. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? No nays. The motion carries 5-0. We'll move on to the consent account, the consent calendar. Anybody wish to pull an item from the consent calendar since there's only one?
I move the consent calendar be approved as presented.
Second.
So a motion by Commissioner Rice and a second by Commissioner Walsh. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, the motion carries. There are no nays. The motion carries 5-0. Move on to the administrative agenda. And item one in the administrative agenda is clerk treasure for possible action. Discussion to adopt resolution 2020 R-062, levying the tax rates for all political entities within Douglas County for fiscal year 2020, 2021 pursuant to NRS 361.460. Ms. Lewis, five minute presentation.
Thank you. I don't, I do not think it'll take me that long. As you know, I talk fast anyway, but don't have a lot to say. This is an annual resolution. It is, all the individual tax rates were approved by the taxing entities in Douglas County when they approved their, their final budget. This resolution is to levy those tax, tax rates and allow me to bill out taxes in July. So in a couple of weeks, we'll send out the annual tax bill. And so this resolution is to levy those tax rates. Any questions?
Questions from board? In your backup, you say that the we had to wait because the the tax, Nevada Tax Board was having their meeting this morning and they approved these. So what's the point of us approving them?
They approved the tax rates as part of the entities approved the tax rates and then the state approves and levies the tax rates at the state level. But levy them per state law to levy them in the county, the Board of County Commissioners passes the resolution to levy them.
So do we have the authority to approve or not approve a tax levy?
Um, I, I see that Zach's on here, so hopefully can jump on. You do not have the authority to approve the tax rate. That's done at the taxing entities. If you don't approve the tax levy, then the, honestly, the major revenue source or County General Fund, but also for all the other taxing entities, I would not be able to bill those taxes. But I don't know what, what other consequences or what it would mean.
So Zach, do you want to come in on? Just a minute, Mr. Angles will get Zach Waddle.
Chair Zach Wiley, DA's office. I don't have much to add to what, what Ms. Lewis said. This is really just a, an administrative act at this point to allow Kathy to levy the taxes, to send the tax bills out. If you, I, I you could conceivably fail to do so. But obviously that would put a, a great strain on all the entities that, that rely on, on the tax levies.
We could approve all but one. For instance, the swimming school, the swimming board. Mr. Angles?
Um, this is just a point of, of discussion. It, Ms. Lewis, this includes all of the GIDs, does it not?
Yes.
It does. Yes, sir. Yeah. And in the background, for the past couple of years, I've included a sheet for your reference that shows the, the changes in tax rates for all the different entities in Douglas County. So you'd see all the individual tax rates.
Thank you. All right.
And also, sorry.
Go ahead.
All right. I also, in the background, for your information, has been through years of doing this, your information, the, the individual pieces of the county rate. So the county rate is a dollar point one six eight and, but it is any individual rates going to many individual funds. So I have that detail for you too.
Yeah. Of course, my concern is the swimming pool rate, which has been excessively high, continues to be high. And I've, I've pled with the boards who said they're going to turn it back. I've also asked the county and look at doing that. It just hasn't ever clicked with anyone that, that perhaps maybe that rate is too high. And we should, instead of spending 15 cents per hundred for the swimming pool district, we should be spending less and putting more in the roads. That doesn't seem to have any resonance. Ms. Angles?
Yes, Mr. Chair, that, that came up as an item of discussion some months ago. And it apparently got sidetracked because what we wanted to do is have Ms. Lewis give us a little bit of a timeline over the last five years or so of how much revenue that abatement item for the swimming facility is generating. I think you're right. We are probably being excessively generous. And that could be rolled back, but we don't know as to what point until we can do a bit of an, an analysis.
Thank you. Mr. Wolf?
Yes, didn't the county manager review the, the budget for the swim district? I think, Patrick, didn't you have some kind of a, a comment at one of our previous board meetings that they were still pretty tight?
Uh, yeah, for the record, Patrick Kates. Um, I did take a look at their financials. They have a balanced budget. They are not sitting on a lot of reserves, which I think was the assumption. They do have some capital obligations. There's, there's just not a lot of money there. I think my takeaway from looking at their financials and digging into this is that, you know, there, there probably is a reasonable discussion to have about that increment and changing it in the future. But there's a process that we have to go through with the state and it didn't seem like there was enough time to adequately do that. I, I don't have the information in front of me, but there's timelines in which you have to make those changes with the state and there's not sufficient time to enact them for the current fiscal year. And it's, it's not a unilateral decision for the county that the county would get a piece of that tax increment. It would be up to the state. So any taxing entity or entity that receives taxes could appeal to the state to receive that funding. So there's a lot of complicating factors and timelines that we have to, to work through to be able to consider that.
But that doesn't ma, mean that it shouldn't be done. Uh, and Kathy, what is a, a penny of a tax rate now? Is it, I would imagine it's gone up from 177,000. It should be up close to 200,000.
And, and thank you, Commissioner. If you remember right from that discussion many years ago, a penny is different for every entity and every, and even the entities, even the individual tax rates within the county, a penny is different because of abatement. If that abatement was because that entity increased their tax rate versus just the assessed value increasing, the value of that penny is different than entities that never increased their tax rate. So I don't have in front of me, but it's different for everybody.
Right.
Of our tax law.
Mr. Nelson?
Well, my understanding is different because it affects different people, but isn't the swimming pool affect everybody in the county?
No.
Really one
No, it only affects the people in the valley.
Just the valley. Okay.
Yep.
Kathy, do you have an approximate amount of what a penny would be equal to?
I haven't, honestly, I have not done that. So I do not even have an approximate amount in front of me. I can get that information to you, but I do not have it with me.
Yeah, it was 172,000 generally speaking.
That's, that's what I thought.
Depending on it was 177,000 when, during this conversation we had five years ago. You know, and I, since the abatement has occurred and we've, we've had increases, I would imagine it's up around $200,000. So in round figures, you're talking about 2.6 million is the revenue that we're talking about, you know? But I'll go along with whatever the majority of the board wants to do. Commissioner Nelson?
Well, I recommend we get started on seeing what the process would be and get started on that process of maybe getting two or three cents back out of this.
I would agree with Dave.
I would too, but that, the only thing we can do is make that as an addendum to the motion.
Mr. Chair, Zach Wiley, DA's office, let me interject here. So I, I, you know, I don't want to necessarily squash the discussion, but keep in mind, all of you, that your agenda is for this particular resolution to levy the tax rates for all the entities within the county. At this point, the, the, the motion cannot include, you know, a, anything regarding the, the pool district. But I think the staff can take this under direction to look into the process further in the future and, and bring it back to the board for a more full discussion and analysis at a later time.
Does that work for you, Commissioner Nelson?
Well, if we can't do it now, let's get it on the agenda so we can discuss it.
But it seems to me we're talking tax rates and we ought to be able to talk the tax rate of a specific entity, but Commissioner Rice?
A couple of things. Number one, Commissioner Nelson, anyone living at the lake that wants to use that pool has to pay separate rate, much different than the people in the valley pay. And a lot of people are not aware of that. Secondly, I, I would think that the resolution we're looking at, where I don't think that we're able to, can choose what we're approving and not. I believe, Kathy, correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems to me that we either adopt the resolution or we do not. Is that correct?
I, I would agree with that. This is, and this is not to adopt the tax rates and this is to levy the tax rates that were already adopted. So this is to levy them to be able to, to bill out.
Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to make a motion.
All right, Mr. Rice, please.
I move that we adopt resolution 2020 R-062 to levy tax rates in the Douglas County for fiscal year 2020 slash 2021 pursuant to NRS 361.460 as presented.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Rice, a second by Commissioner Walsh. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 No nays. The motion carries 5-0. All right, moving on to item number two. And there's at least two people interested in this. Title, "For Possible Action Discussion to Provide Direction to County Manager Whether to Continue to Engage Professional Services of Outside Contractors" Such as Marcus G. Faust, P.C., and Legacy Land and Water LLC Related to the Douglas County Efforts to Secure the Enactment of Federal Legislation Regarding the Management and Disposition of Federally Owned Lands in Douglas County." Mr. Kates?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So these two contracts, a $50,000 contract with Marcus Faust and a $48,000 contract with, for professional services with land, Legacy Land and Water LLC have been in place with the county for a number of years. We get a lot of, a lot of good advice and services from, from both of these contracts. Primarily, they've been focused on the lands bill, although not exclusively. We receive a lot of assistance on other issues as well. These two contracts have been reviewed by the board annually for, for quite a while. And I think they're good contracts. We have the budget for them. And I, I do recommend that the board approve these contracts. However, in light of the fiscal circumstances with our anticipated revenue shortfalls, I wanted the board to have an opportunity to look at this and reaffirm that we want to continue this work in pursuit of the lands bill. I think this has been a very good session for the, our lands bill efforts. Of course, I'm new to all this, but I understand historically, this is about as close as we've ever come to getting the lands bill passed. But it is a discretionary expenditure and I wanted the board to weigh in on this in particular, since we'll have changes to the board coming in January. And again, I do recommend approval. Just wanted to bring it to the board's attention and have them affirm that we continue these efforts.
Comments from board members? Commissioner Walsh and then Commissioner Angles?
Thank you. Frankly, I think that Marcus has done an excellent job, he and Olivia. I know they've done, they've worked really hard on the, on the lands bill, but they do other things besides that. And I think in light of this COVID-19 crisis, and I know that Marcus and his team works with NACO as well. So in light of this COVID-19 crisis, I think it's very, very important that we renew his contract because he's invaluable as far as I'm concerned to help the counties in Nevada, especially Douglas County, get their share of the pie. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Angles?
Uh, is this
Is this already an item that's in the budget?
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Nelson? And did that answer your question fully?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, my only concern is I've been on the board now three and a half years and haven't seen much movement in this item. Seems like we're going nowhere. So that's the only concern I have and I'd like to hear a little more of an update as to if we are moving forward or not.
Okay, after we get through board questions, I'll ask the two gentlemen to speak on behalf of that. Commissioner Rice?
I would say, Commissioner Nelson, when we were back in Washington DC the last time, we had a meeting arranged by Marcus and Olivia with our two senators. And we were well received by both of them. And some, the groundwork had been laid and it now looks like we are going to get movement. And I would hate to abandon that project at this point. So I would, I am very much in favor of continuing with both contracts.
All right. Any other questions from the board? If not, I'll ask Mr. Etchegoyen and Mr. Faust to make their comments. We'll start with Mr. Etchegoyen. Any comments?
Um, you know, I consider it my job to kind of reach out continuously to the public, to your constituents. And things have been relatively quiet. I meet very frequently with folks in the Fish Springs area and such because the land bill, if the land conveyances occur, are a fair number of them in their neighborhood. But I do talk often with friends in the Battle Wilderness and the Toyoabi Chapter, the Sierra Club and try and keep things, the communication wide open and, and have been doing that. Some other land bills can have some difficulty there, but we're, we're looking quite good. And of course, Marcus will have a much better handle on the Washington events and what's happening there. But things have been relatively quiet and I consider it my job to keep it that way here.
At least one area, that's good. All right, Mr. Faust?
Thank you very much, and I'm very pleased to be with you today. Before I speak about the conservation bill, I'd like to mention that we have been very active working with Lisa Granahan, particularly in the last couple of weeks on your COVID work. I think you know that we do work with DAB at NACO and we also represent kind of the largest recipient of those Heroes Act funds. COVID monies came to Clark County, so particularly Olivia in my office has become somewhat of an expert on that. And we have been making connections actually between the folks in Clark who are really involved in a lot of different aspects of this and, and sharing the work that they've been doing and NACO has been doing with Lisa so that we make sure that as was just mentioned, Douglas gets its fair share of the COVID funds. I'll also mention that we've been successful in the last number of years actually getting additional funds under the Lake Tahoe Restoration Act into the Tahoe Fire Partnership, the Cave Rock Municipal Water System in a Connection to Fight Fires. This year, when the commissioners came back, and it was good that they came back as early as they did before the town was closed for COVID, we requested from the delegation roughly $9 million of additional funds for that water infrastructure to fight fires up at the lake. And I remain very optimistic that those funds will be secured. We have great support from our delegation for those monies as well. As it relates to the conservation bill, this has been a very long process. But the conservation bill enjoys great support from our delegation. And I'd like to mention specifically in response to Commissioner Nelson's question to explain one of the real problems that caused the delay and many of the other commissioners who were on the commission at that point in time are aware. We had a turnover in the governing council at the Washoe Tribe. They had endorsed the bill. It had moved through committee markup in the United States Senate. And then the tribe had a new election. The new tribal chairman was elected and that support was withdrawn. We had to rework essentially the legislation substantially in a way that benefited us and benefited the tribe. I would say, I guess it was only the Forest Service that we had to bring onboard, but that new bill has great support from the tribe and all other stakeholders that we had before, including conservation groups. And with them onboard, Senator Cortez Masto let out last fall, introduced it with Senator Rosen. In March, Congressman Amade introduced it. And now he has reintroduced it a second time last month as a part of a compromise that he's pushing on the expansion of the Fallon Naval Air Force Base Test and Training Range, hoping that it can receive some greater coalition support. So I am optimistic about it and that's a brief explanation of what the delays were caused by previously we lost some stakeholder support that we had to bring back onboard.
All right. Any other questions from board members? Okay, any last comments from either Mr. Etchegoyen or Mr. Faust?
No.
If not, we'd be looking for a motion.
Yes, sir. I would move we provide direction to the county manager whether to continue to engage, continue to engage the professional services of outside contractors related to Douglas County efforts to secure the enactment of federal legislation regarding the management and disposition of federally-owned lands in Douglas County.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second by, a motion by Commissioner Walsh, a second by Commissioner Rice. And you, you were reading part of that. I'd like clarification on the motion. Is it to provide guidance or is it to be conditional?
The recommended motion is provide direction to the county manager.
Okay, do we, do we want to?
Mr. Chair, Zach.
Continue the, the contract or not?
Right. So can I make a suggestion to the board, Zach Wadley, DA's office? I think what staff's looking for is, is clear direction from the board as to whether to proceed with these contracts or not.
Yeah.
It sounds like the direction from the board is to go ahead and to proceed and approve the contract. So that, I think that's the form of the motion that you're looking for.
Yeah, I can clarify my load on motion. I'll, I'll just say that I would move we provide direction to the county manager to sign these contracts, to extend, extend the contracts to both Mr. Etchegoyen and to Marcus Faust LLC.
Is the second agree with the amendment?
I do.
So we have an amendment to the motion, which is to provide direction. So first we'll vote on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment, signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays? No nays. So the motion carries, the amendment carries. Now we'll vote on the motion. The Commissioner Walsh mentioned first. All those in favor, or any questions on that? Okay, then the motion by Commissioner Walsh, second by Commissioner Rice. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays? No nays. So the, the direction and the consummation of the contracts has been clarified. Thank you very much. Gentlemen, and have fun in DC, Mr. Faust. Don't tear down any monuments. All right, so we'll go on. Item number three. Now we'll get there as soon as I get through all the contracts. All right. Item number three, "For Possible Action Discussion to Approve $135,000 Amendment to the Contract With Interliter Delamas and Associates, HDL, to Provide Transient Occupancy Tax, Room Tax Administration Services for Vacation Home Rentals Properties And Authorize the County Manager to Sign the Related Documents." Ms. Willoughby?
Thank you, Terry Willoughby for the record. As you know, the board approved a contract with HDL in the last year for the room tax collection services for commercial properties. And that has been a great success. However, it has been confusing to customers of the county whose VHR customers pay One Place to Host Compliance and commercial properties pay room tax to HDL. With this amendment, we're streamlining the process, so all room tax will go through HDL and make it easier for the customers. Also, they provide them more robust service than Host Compliance has. If you look on packet page 75 under the scope of services, it clearly outlines the services they provide. HDL is more of a customer-friendly service where people can call if they have questions and they provide it just a white glove customer service experience. So we're expecting great success. They also audit the returns and review the returns that are filed. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions on the contract amendment.
Any questions from the board? Any discussion from the board? Commissioner Rice?
On both the LTBA and the TDVA, one of the problems that we've been having with the, the vacation rental supervision is that they have done a very poor job of collecting the, not only the TOT, but also the mandated $5 a night tax. And I'm hopeful that by approving this amendment to the current contract with HDL that the revenues brought into the county will increase significantly. And I am very much in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry Willoughby for the record. That is one of the specific items we have talked to HDL about, about. And they will, they have, they work with Host Compliance on scouring the websites, but they will also be reviewing all the returns and the rental, versus the rental activity in the area to make sure we are getting our proper revenues.
Any questions from any other members of the board? Commissioner Ingalls?
Just a curiosity question. Commissioner Rice or Ms. Willoughby might be able to just enlighten me on this. How much of the other properties around the lake does this organization handle? Do you have any idea?
What? HDL only does room tax collection. That's all they do. They have a contract with the city of South Lake. They only contract with government agencies.
Okay, so they, any other entity around the lake they could contract with?
They could. I believe they work with City of South Lake Tahoe, but I'm not sure.
So it would just be us and South Lake Tahoe?
They have a multitude of clients. I could provide that information to the board.
Right. No, that's okay. I mean, I was just curious.
Yeah, I'm not sure about their entire client list off the top of my head, but they're a nationwide firm and they have, they work with municipal agencies across the country.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question on the Exhibit B compensation.
Yes.
Can you clarify how they're, they're getting paid? What it says is HDL's compensation for performing operations management services related to transient occupancy tax is a fixed fee of $650 per quarterly filing property per year and 750 per month, per monthly filing property per year. I don't, it seems like they're getting paid twice for the same thing. Can you explain how that's working?
So that, that's actually the commercial property schedule that is already in place.
It doesn't.
We have seven commercial properties that remit quarterly. Under code, they are allowed to. And so that's one return every three months versus some properties file every month, the majority file every month. For the vacation home rentals, it's $15 per filing. That's found on later down in the scope.
Yeah, well, this particular thing doesn't say that it's only for commercial. The compensation just says for anybody filing the TOT.
That was the original contract. If you go to the amendment specifically on page 77 of the packet, it outlines the compensation for vacation home rentals under this amendment.
Okay.
Already seen the original contract with the commercial properties.
Yeah. Doesn't seem clear, but if you're satisfied with it, I guess we go with it. Any other questions, comments, interrogatories? Not seeing any. Mr. Wadley, did you want to make a comment? I saw your picture come up.
So I think.
I think Ms. Willoughby explained it, but the, the, the way the contract structured is there was an amendment to the existing contract to handle the commercial properties. The amendment covers the residential vacation home rentals. And that's where the $15 per return is established. So I'm comfortable with it. Jerry's comfortable with it. And I think the company's comfortable with the financial structure and how they're going to get paid as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would say that, that page 77 does not, again, differentiate between residential and commercial. And moreover, when you read it, it, it doesn't specifically, if I were, if I were going to rent out my property, I would have a hard time figuring out what that would be based on what this, this says. I think it really needs to be clear for the consumer. You talked about them being white, white glove. Well, white glove would also include making it very clear what the costs are. And so I, I think you need to differentiate between commercial and residential, just me personally, but.
When we renew the contract.
Board wants to do is goodbye me.
Terry Willoughby for the record, when we do the complete contract renewal, we'll make sure to include that. The amendment for your reference starts on page 73, where it starts, that's everything above that is the old contract that the board approved last year. And then the amendment starts on page 73.
Okay, fine. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, is there a motion that we can make? Anybody at all? Anybody?
Mr. Chair, I move approve, to approve the, an amendment to the current contract with HDL to expand the scope of services, provide transient, transient occupancy tax operation, operations management services for vacation home rental properties in Douglas County.
Second. Okay, I think Mr. Nelson got there before you, Mr. Rice. So the motion by Commissioner Walsh and a second, Nelson, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? No nays, motion carries 5-0. For presentation only, this is item four. Presentation to Update the County Commissioners on Vacation Home Rentals, VHR Revenue For Fiscal Year 2019-20 in Douglas County and an Update on Activities of the VHR Task Force Appointed by the County Manager. Ms. Davidson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the commission, Jennifer Davidson, Assistant County Manager for the record. This item appears on the agenda in order to provide me an opportunity to update the board regarding vacation home rentals, the revenue and the activities of the task force. So I'll start with the revenue side of things. The initial projections for revenue for this fiscal year, fiscal year 1920 were based on previous fiscal year projections, 1819 actuals, not projections, 1819 actuals. At that time, we estimated the amount of TOT collected to be between 2.3 and 2.4 million for fiscal year 1819 actuals. And I say that's an estimate because I would remind the board, until recently, we had not been tracking VHR revenue, TOT or TLLT revenue related to VHRs, separate from the main pool. related to VHRs, separate from the main pool of TOT and TLLT revenue that we received. We have since changed that. In this fiscal year, the information that I am sharing with you to date is an actual reflection, not an estimate of the revenue we have received. So as I mentioned, we had projected for this fiscal year that we would receive somewhere between two-point-three and two-point-four based on last fiscal year's revenue. At the beginning of this calendar year, in January, we pulled the actuals, and we were on track to receive one-point-nine million in VHR revenue. Of course, COVID-nineteen happened. Through May thirty-first of this year, we have actually received one-point-seven million dollars of revenue from VHRs in both TOT and TLLT funds that we've collected. That information is provided in your backup. So we are slightly under where we projected in revenue. Certainly, it is a large amount of money, and some may even consider it an eyebrow-raising amount of money. In my VHR task force report, which has been provided to the county manager, I would say that our VHR revenue that we receive fluctuates somewhere between eighteen to twenty percent of the total TLLT and TOT revenue that we receive for Douglas County. The second part of my presentation today, I just did want to give you a status update on the activities of the task force. The task force has completed its work. The technical advisory group did meet to discuss the recommendations of the task force and did provide some additional recommendations, both of which have been provided to the county manager for his review. It is my understanding he is in the process of preparing his recommendations and will be making a report to the commission in the near future. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, and of course, would defer any time to the county manager if he had anything to add.
Thank you for your presentation. Short and to the point. Commissioner Ingles?
Ms. Davidson, we were getting a lot of emails from folks up at the lake who are full-time residents in regard to the VHRs. And do you have any knowledge of the impact of the homeowners going up there and staying in those properties that they typically would rent out because of the current virus situation? Does that come up at all?
It has, absolutely. So we are seeing an increase in use of these vacation home properties by private property owners. And we are seeing complaints from neighbors not used to seeing the actual property owners at home. We can tell you that overall rentals were down during COVID and definitely pursuant to the governor's directions. For the most part, directives, excuse me, for the most part, we did see VHR home renters and owners modify their behavior consistent with what the governor asked. We did put out information to those property owners, asking them to modify to whom they are renting those properties, asking them to be smart and considerate of the impacts based on COVID. And we did, we did, for the most part, see modifications. I would say we were tracking rentals. We have approximately six hundred and eight permitted properties before COVID started, and a number of those property owners allowed their property permits to expire or to be in this limbo town where they did not review. We have granted temporary extensions because we can't get those properties inspected currently. But that number dropped from six oh eight to about five hundred active permits up at the lake. And we would say at any given time, we were watching between twenty... I think at its highest point, we saw as many as thirty units being rented. But that's a significant drop-off from what we were seeing prior to COVID-nineteen.
Thank you.
Further questions? Comments? Commissioner Rice, certainly you have. Please.
Oh, yes. I live right around the corner from one of the more notorious home rentals. The whole neighborhood calls it the Party House. And even at that place, things have quieted down tremendously. And we haven't had to call the sheriff in a couple of months, which is a good thing for the sheriff department as well as us. But what I did want to point out is that the beach use at all of the public beaches on our side of the lake have been inundated on the weekends. Their people are parking up and down Highway fifty, up Elks Point Road, up Warrior Way. And I was gratified, and if the sheriff's on this, I was gratified to see that they had a unit up there siding and towing for vehicles that were parked in the no-parking zone in Zephyr Cove. So I hadn't seen that in a long time, and I want to thank the sheriff department for doing something about that. But we are picking up. Crowds are coming here. Very few people wearing masks and practice social distancing. And I'm not sure what we can do about that, but I have no idea who's supposed to be enforcing that. I would hate to throw that at the sheriff department because they don't have the manpower to hang on on a regular basis, so. It's, it is what it is, I suppose, but I can't understand why there is a surge in the infections within young people because they, from what I've seen, especially at the demonstrations and the places where young people congregate, such as the beaches, they are not practicing social distancing, so that could be a large problem in the future.
Thank you. Any other comments from commissioners on VHRs? And then we'll be looking for a motion. Oh, no, this is presentation only, so we'll just go with what you presented. Thank you very much, Ms. Davidson. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so now we'll go on to item number five. Entitled, "For Presentation Only, Discussion of the Allocation of Eight Million Nine Hundred Thirty-One Thousand Sixty-One Dollars of Federal CARES Act Funding From the State of Nevada to Douglas County." In March of two thousand twenty, the Congress passed, and President Trump signed the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, CARES Act. Discussion will include allowable uses and constraints on this funding and possible uses within Douglas County. Mr. Cates?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a PowerPoint for you. Let me queue that up.
What would we do without a PowerPoint?
Hang on here. All right, hang on just a second. This did not perform as I was expecting. What's going on here?
Sheriff, while we're doing this, can I ask?
Yes.
A question?
Sure, go ahead, sir.
Mr. Cates?
Yes, sir.
Have we got the money yet?
We have not received money yet, to my knowledge.
Okay, thank you.
Just a promise from the governor.
As a side note to what Mr. Ingles was actually asking, is how we received the money. Clark County, you'll notice in the backup, was not mentioned. That's because they were specifically singled out in the CARES Act, and they got money directly. So you had a whole bunch of folks there, and you get more money, and you get it quicker.
So let me try this again. One of my monitors went totally dark. I don't know what's going on here. Hang on. Okay, so there's that. Let me get to that. And then I share it.
Well, while we're... There it is. Well done. Okay. The logo and the CARES Act.
There we go. Okay, so I'll get that running. So the CARES Act, you know, that was almost a two-trillion-dollar piece of legislation. It included establishing the Coronavirus Relief Fund, and Congress appropriated a hundred and fifty billion dollars for allocation to state and local governments as part of the CARES Act. The total distribution to the state of Nevada was one-point-two-five billion dollars. Of that, four hundred and fourteen million was a direct distribution to Clark County. So any local government that was over five hundred thousand dollars got a direct distribution from the feds, and the state received a balance of eight hundred and thirty-five million dollars. Of that, the state is making a distribution to local governments, which would include everybody except for Clark County, of one-hundred-and-forty-eight million dollars. Of that, eight million nine hundred thirty-one thousand and sixty-one dollars has been allocated to Douglas County. We received word of that, gosh, I think it was two weeks ago today. We have not seen that distribution yet, but I received a call personally from the governor telling us it was coming.
Did he remember you from when you were the director of admin?
He didn't say anything about that, but I'm sure he had sixteen calls to make. I'd just soon he not remember. So the purpose, purposes of these funds, payments from the fund may only be used to cover necessary expenditures incurred due to the public emergency with respect to COVID-nineteen. Costs not accounted for in the most recent budget as of March twenty-seventh. So there've got to be costs that we didn't already have budgeted to expend. And the cost period for costs incurred, beginning March first and ending December thirtieth of this year. Necessary expenditures, and I'm really kind of summarizing some of the guidance that's in your backup. You have, I guess, I'd call it question-and-answer guidance from the feds on use of these funds. And I'm more or less summarizing that here for you. Expenditures must be used for actions taken to respond to the public health emergency, the direct emergency response to address medical and public health needs. We can also expend the money on what is referred to as second-order effects. These are economic support to those suffering from unemployment or business interruptions due to COVID-nineteen-related business closures. Expenditures must be necessary, and what is deemed necessary is what would be the reasonable judgment standard would be used. So you don't necessarily know firmly what that means until a federal auditor comes, as you visit. The funds may not be used to fill shortfalls in government revenue. That's very explicit. We can't use it to supplement decreases in TOT, for instance. Not allowable. All the costs have to relate directly to COVID or be one of those second-order effects that are described. Costs not accounted for in the budget. So the funds may be used to only cover costs that are not accounted for in the budget most recently approved as of March twenty-seventh. That was the date the bill was passed. So basically, any expenditure, line-add expenditures that were not included in that budget that relate to COVID-nineteen, we have a potential to get reimbursed for. Costs incurred between March one through December thirtieth. If a government entity has not used the funds to pay costs that were incurred by December thirtieth, those funds must be returned to the U.S. Treasury. A cost is incurred when the unit of government has expended funds to cover the costs. So we can't encumber them. It can't be for some future payment. We have to expend them by June thirty. And so the funds will only be available to us for the first six months of the next fiscal year, which starts July one, assuming we receive those funds fairly soon. And there is an opportunity to get reimbursement for costs that we expended in fiscal year nineteen-twenty, which is the current fiscal year, which is about to end next week. Eligible use of funds, medical expenses, public health expenses, and again, these are expenses related directly to COVID-nineteen. Payroll expenses for public safety, public health, healthcare, human services, and similar employees whose services are substantially dedicated to mitigation or responding to COVID-nineteen public health emergencies. And I think that's really important, substantially dedicated to mitigating or responding to COVID-nineteen. Expenses of actions to facilitate compliance with COVID-nineteen-related public health measures, and expenses associated with the provision of economic support in connection with COVID-nineteen public health emergency. Those are those secondary effects that I described in the earlier slide. Ineligible use of funds, expenses for state share of Medicaid. We don't deal with that directly, so that doesn't really apply to us. Damages covered by insurance, payroll or benefits for employees who work duties are not substantially dedicated to responding to COVID-nineteen. Expenses that have been or will be reimbursed under any federal program. That's an important one to note. Just as an example, the CARES Act also included, what do they call it, PPP payments to businesses. So we have to be very careful that we not use these funds for something that's otherwise reimbursable by the feds. Reimbursement to donors for donated items, bonuses and severance pays, legal settlements. That stuff's kind of obvious. Possible uses for Douglas County. So county expenses to date, we have logged about one-point-four million dollars in expenses. As soon as we started dealing with this emergency, our CFO set up a a project code for COVID-nineteen, and we started asking everyone to code activities to that. Staff time, expenditures, personal protective equipment, putting up plexiglass, that kind of thing. I would note that we, those expenditures are currently under review. We set up that code and asked people to start coding to them before this information came out about these funds and all of these definitions of how they can be used. So we really need to go through and make sure what we've already coded to COVID-nineteen meet the definitions under this bill and to make sure there aren't other expenditures that could fall under this bill that we didn't code. So that review process is in progress, and we also need to estimate expenses through December thirty of what we're likely to spend. We're having lots of conversations with departments about what their needs are and how we might wisely use these funds going forward. There are other government entities who would have eligible costs. There is, there is language in the, in the question-and-answer session that say county governments don't necessarily have to give money down to other political subdivisions. It's at the discretion of the county, but I think certainly East Fork Fire, Tahoe-Douglas Fire in particular, I know have incurred expenditures that would be eligible for this funding. We also have the Quad County Multi-Agency Coordination Group, or the Quad Mac, that has been in charge of the emergency response to COVID-nineteen. We do cost sharing among the four counties, so we need to get a full accounting of that as to what portion of that is. We could use these funds to pay those costs as well. Another possibility, this is one of those second-tier impacts that were discussed, a small business grant program. Clark County has done this with their funds. They have basically set up a granting program that would look at businesses who've had to shut down or been impacted by COVID-nineteen and would give them grants. We have been coordinating with NACO. There's been a couple of NACO calls. There's some more breakout sessions planned as counties try to work through what to do with these funds and want to make sure we use them properly. We're talking to NACO about doing a coordinated effort where they might contract with the entity that is running the grant program for Clark County. And they could even set up a portal for businesses to... Um, and they could even set up a portal, um, for, uh, businesses to apply for these grants so that we don't have 16 different counties trying to, trying to reinvent the wheel, trying to achieve the same objective. So those discussions are ongoing. I know, uh, Lisa Granahan, um, and Terry Willoughby are participating in discussion groups around that, um, a- as have I. Uh, other examples of possible uses. Uh, unemployment insurance costs, that would be for the county as an employer. Um, we haven't laid anyone off as a result of, of COVID-19, so. Why at the moment, but could in the future. Uh, workers' comp expenses for first responders and critical health coworkers that have contracted COVID-19. Thankfully, we haven't had that to date. We have tested some employees, first responders primarily. Um, so some of those costs, which are pretty minimal, um, uh, could be reimbursable. But should, should we have any of those people actually contract COVID-19 and incur medical expenses? That would be a legitimate use of these funds. Costs associated with telework or remote work due to COVID-19. Uh, we entered into an agreement with Zoom. We're now paying for Zoom subscriptions. We have, uh, reconfigured people's workspace, um, and tried to assist and facilitate them working remotely. And we've been able to do that with a pretty substantial portion of our workforce. We have not done it with everybody. Uh, for instance, we didn't necessarily have a, a stock of laptops and, and all the technology that we needed for everyone to be able to remote work. So we're looking at the possibility of, of spending some more money in this area um, to make sure that we have those capabilities to telework and work remotely. Particularly in light of, uh, of the, uh, spike in cases that we've seen and the governor's, um, press conference last night where he seems to be slowing down a, a move to phase three and is mandating the use of masks. So some of these, uh, working in alternative ways may be with us for some time. So there's some opportunity there. COVID-19 public health emergency, uh, recovery planning. So if we wanted to, uh, learn from our experience and develop a more robust plan, I know the, uh, plan that we started out with back in January or February, we started having emergency management meetings was based on, um, our previous response to Ebola. Uh, it's the only model we had, and I think we've all learned a lot in the last few months. Um, so, you know, there's some, some resources there that we could plan for the future. Uh, contact tracing costs. And you know, contact tracing is a very important feature for, uh, dealing with this public health crisis. When somebody is positive, there are medical professionals that interview them and determine everyone they've come in contact with and interview those people, so on down the line. Make sure people get, um, tested. We have had county employees dedicated to this effort, um, with, uh, Carson City Health and Human Services. A community health nurse has done, uh, a lot of work in this area, and those costs are also reimbursable. Or not reimbursable, but are appropriate for this funding source, as you said. Private hospital grants for COVID-19. Um, the rules talk about public hospitals. A lot of counties do operate public hospitals. We don't. Um, but there is possibility that we could provide grants to private hospitals. I put an asterisk on this because I know there are other portions of the CARES Act that provide funding to hospitals for some of these expenses. Um, so I'm not sure how much need is there. We'll have to sort that out, uh, with our healthcare providers. Um, an interesting provision, um, we could use funds for payments to facilitate livestock depopulation incurred by producers due to supply chain disruptions caused by COVID-19. Um, so I've heard nationally that some, uh, pork producers and chicken producers had actually slaughtered animals because they couldn't get them to the slaughterhouse for processing. I have talked to Lindy Trichester with Cooperative Extension, and she is not aware of, of anybody in Douglas County that is in that situation. But we have a lot of livestock producers, obviously, and, um, that's a possible use. Some other, uh, uses, assistance to individuals. There's a few ways this is described. Uh, we, we could, um, for instance, um, use them for costs incurred in enrolling people in government benefit programs due to a layoff because of COVID-19. Uh, a consumer grant program to prevent eviction and homelessness if it's directly related to COVID-19. Um, employment and training programs for furloughed employees. With this money come a lot of risks. Um, it's a good opportunity, but it's a lot of money, probably more than the county itself will need for expenses. You have to be very careful how we administer this. It's a big responsibility and something of a burden to us, uh, as well as an opportunity. Um, we're responsible for all the funds distributed to us by the state of Nevada. If we give funds to East Fork, hospitals, a, a business granting program, it's all on the county to make sure that's done properly and properly documented. As I said earlier, unspent funds must be returned. Um, all expenses are subject to federal audit. And frankly, that's what worries me the most. You know, this was a big piece of legislation pushed through very quickly, and the rules are not really well-defined. And it makes me nervous that we could have federal auditors come in, you know, a couple of years down the road and look at a lot of these expenditures and go, nope, that doesn't look reasonable to us, and disallow these expenditures. And then they'll be looking at Douglas County to pay the back. So we have to be very careful how we administer these funds. Uh, record keeping is going to be key. We need to make sure everything is documented, we have proper receipts, and that the connection to COVID-19 is very well-laid out for every dime we spend. We also have a lack of resources and knowledge in the county in administering new sub-grant programs. We're talking about the possibility of, uh, business grants, certain types of grants to individuals. Uh, we don't do a lot of that in, in the county, and we don't have the resources or, or the knowledge. Um, but I think some of this, particularly the business grants, have a lot of, um, opportunity. And I think it's really important, if we do move forward with some of those, that we collaborate with other jurisdictions, um, as I discussed in, in working with, uh, in working with NACO. So our implementation plan roughly is, uh, to receive the funds from the state, as I said, that's still pending. Um, reviewing, uh, incurred county expenditures for eligibility. Uh, estimate, uh, a budget for the county costs through December 30th. It's the same process for other government entities that have eligible, uh, costs. Uh, partnering with NACO to develop a business grant program framework. Um, consider other aid programs and come back to the, the OCC with a budget and, uh, and grant program for these funds. We'll have to account for these once we receive them, and, uh, we'll need to bring it to the board and set up a special fund to administer them. That is kind of the overview. Um, like I say, we're on the fly just trying to work this out. We just became aware that these funds were, uh, available and going to be distributed to us just a couple of weeks ago. So we've been working hard with NACO and having a lot of internal conversations, and, uh, uh, we'll bring more to you as, as we go and, uh, as we know more. Happy to, uh, answer any questions.
Okay. Well, thank you. If you go back to... And there we go. So do we? You're looking good, Mr. Walsh. You're inside your own home, right? Okay. Whatever, whatever you need to do, you know what I mean? Commissioner Rice?
I have a question, um, uh, Mr. Cates. In, in looking at, at, at some of the, the, the later rules that you presented to us, would it be possible to, uh, cover the expenses to hire someone to exclusively, uh, work on this and to, uh, maintain, uh, records and, uh, coordinate, uh, expenditures with... Could that position be refundable?
Um, it certainly could be, um, for the, um, small business grant program in particular. Um, there's an entity whose name escapes me, um, at the moment, um, that is contracted with Clark County, um, to do, uh, most of that work for them, to do all that work for them. So all they're doing is awards. Um, that is certainly a legitimate expenditure, and I don't know if the CFO wants to elaborate on that.
Yes, Terry Willoughby, for the record, it is possible. I did read, um, the lots of information that's been provided. We can have someone that coordinates the record-keeping for the, for the CARES Act. And we can also, our, our own auditors will be auditing. This is our single audit. It's performed every year. So we can pay for a part of their auditing services to do that.
It would seem to me that that would be a good idea to, uh, instead of increasing the burden on your office and the people that work for you, uh, to, uh, be able to hire somebody to, to remove that from your shoulders. Uh, just a thought.
Good idea.
Any other questions, comments?
Pretty cut and dry.
How about rallies up at the governor's office?
Hmm, it's COVID-related. Let me think about that.
I'm pretty excited about the possibility of grants to our small business owners. That's, uh, that's gonna be great. I'm sure that, uh, you'll learn from Clark County or NACO, whoever, uh, about forms and applications for such grants.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that. I, I think there's a good opportunity there. I'm a, I'm a little more cautious about some of the things I discussed to aid the individuals. Um, I think that, um, our, our community services, um, does a lot of that work. And I think that they're engaging in activities which could be reimbursable depending on who they're helping. Uh, I kind of like that model rather than trying to set up some granting program individuals. Uh, that'd be pretty tough to administer.
Mr. Cates, um, I, um, I did send you a note about, uh, the increase in the, um, the Meals on Wheels that they did, almost exclusively. Uh, that seems to me like that was specifically in, in response to COVID-19. Uh, is that deductible?
Or is that... I, I think so. It, it should be. I, I think so. Um, the only thing I'm not sure about is what we were originally budgeted for. Um, Terry, I don't know if you can comment on that.
Yes, so Terry Willoughby, for the record, those workers have been coding their hours to the COVID project as well as the additional, anything that was additionally purchased because of COVID have all been coded to that project as an expense. So we've been tracking that, and it should be reimbursable.
Okay, and, um, they mentioned on 92, on page 92, they talk about, uh, uh, equipment and, um, and, and I was wondering, uh, are respirators purchased for the county or for emergency man- by the emergency manager or the county or by the quad city? Uh, are, uh, for Douglas County use or, or the quad not city, the quad county, uh, function? Are those respirators going to be, uh, given to the appropriate hospital? Are they ours? And are they reimbursable?
When you say those respirators, but yes, they're reimbursable costs, but there's, there's a lot of people buying a lot of different things. Uh, I'm not totally certain of your question, sir.
Well, some of those respirators were, were bought in the name of Douglas County. It would seem to me that those would belong to either Douglas County or we could give them to the appropriate medical agency. But we would have to know how many of those were bought. And right now, they won't disclose that information. So, uh, you know, we're kind of between a rock and a hard place. Then, uh, the other part of this is, have you talked to the, uh, our hospital in Gardinerville to see, uh, do they need, uh, one-time monies granted to them for the operations or COVID functions? Maybe even for respirators? And, uh, and then also, were any of the COVID patients, um, moved from the, uh, various emergency care facilities that we have? And was that cost captured? And is that cost reimbursable? These are all questions I'm sure you don't have the answers to, but I think those are some of the things that need to be looked at. Um, I, I was glad to hear that you, you've talked to, um, the, uh, extension service to find out about any animals that were put down because they couldn't sell them. That, that seemed pretty important to the, especially the ranchers. Have you gotten any reports from ranchers, though? That's a question.
I have not.
And then, um, um, on page 96, it talks about, um, the, um, grants for various things that social services could make, make out to, uh, private, uh, functions. Are we looking at that through Lisa and her program? Or is that something that we have to wait on? That's just a question. And then the other part is they talk about, um, unemployment and retraining unemployed workers, which is specifically within the, the con- contract with JOIN and Nevada Works. Have they responded? Do, do we have any, um, folks that have requested retraining in the, uh, through social services? And has, uh, JOIN or Nevada Works been contacted? And again, those are also, um, approved expenses. And do we have any u- understanding of that? And how many that would be and where that would go? I'm just asking the questions. I'm not expecting answers, okay? And then they talk about the small business and grants you can make to small businesses. We already had Lake, the Lakeside say they didn't get the money and they had to go out of business. But how many li- little restaurants went out of business because they couldn't afford, uh, to maintain business with no customers? Do we have any idea what that universe is within Douglas County? I think we should know that at some point because, you know, they, I'm sure they had bills even though they went out of business. And I think, reading the stuff that you provided, um, they would be eligible for grants. Because it's directly COVID-19 related. Are you considering doing that? Uh, is Lisa keeping track of that? Is somebody following it? That's my question.
Yeah, Lisa's, Lisa's been digging into this, um, since, since we got notice of this. Uh, that was my discussion about the small business grants that Clark County is doing. Um, and they're using an outside firm that, that looks at the applications of these businesses, looks at their financials. Um, you know, I think one of the things that's important to note is they had the, uh, the PPP payments to businesses for payroll support. And I know a lot of businesses didn't get those. I know a lot of businesses only got a very small amount. Um, but there are other needs of businesses. You know, uh, Lisa had brought up, um, the need for working capital, and she brought up the issue of a restaurant, and if a restaurant had to, uh, you know, had a bunch of food inventory and stock, and then were su- suddenly shut down, that's perishable. They had to dispose of that, give it away or throw it in the garbage. And now they need to restock and be able to be reopened. So that's a, I think that's a great possibility, how we can help our businesses. That's what I've got Lisa working on, uh, front and center right now, trying to figure that piece out.
Uh, that'd be really interesting if, if they do actually aid small businesses with this, th- these monies. So, and personally, I think that's a good use of the money. I think that we're finally hitting on something that is important to the residents of Douglas County for that stuff. Any other questions, commissioners? Commissioner Ingalls, please.
Uh, if I understand everything that has been presented, the money that is going to be dispersed to anybody affected basically by the virus, this all has to be done between now and December. This all has to be done between now and December or the end of December?
That's correct. Yeah, it's not much time at all. We're talking about setting up grant programs that have never even existed before. You gotta get it out the door in 180 days.
And do it without the fear of an audit.
Exactly. High likelihood that we will end up returning a big chunk of this money just because we can't put all that stuff in motion quick enough.
That's why I was suggesting that we hire somebody to administrate it for the administration of this process.
Yes.
According to. The information that's come out of NACO is that money would accrue to the state. And the state could then reapportion it as they saw fit.
So I'm gonna need that money.
I'm sorry, Mr.?
Gonna need that money.
Yeah, right. Okay, well, thank you for the presentation.
Patrick, I just have a real quick question. Would the school district be eligible for any of these funds?
So it's our understanding that the school district has a separate funding stream. That's my understanding from NACO.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions from board members? Ms. Wood, are you getting ready to take final public comment?
Yes, sir, Natalie Wood, for the record, I have not received any closing public comment yet.
Well, I hadn't called for it. I'm trying to get to the end of the agenda, which just ended. As opposed to having public comment, but I know we've got to have it. So we'll call for a public comment and we'll wait five minutes so that we get the final public comment. Assuming there are no other questions or comments from commissioners. Seeing none, then we'll call for final, final public comment. It is 2:33 and we'll see if we get any final public comment. Can't imagine we wouldn't. It's 2:38. Have you received any public comment, Ms. Wood?
No, sir.
Well, without any further comment. One more opportunity for board members. Any item? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, gentlemen. I appreciate Mr. Nelson and Mr. Wood, I mean, Mr. Rice making the effort to get hold of us. And it was all very successful. Thank you, gentlemen. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie.